Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. It is six o'clock. So I am going to call the meeting to order at six o'clock. I will... Well, first of all, I'm Brian Burton. I am the Chair of the Shenango County IDA. This is Carrie Green, who's Executive Director of the IDA, and Carrie Ann O'Connor, who also works for Connor Schenango and will take me notes this evening. I am going to first read the Notice of Public Hearing in its entirety to do as a public, and then I will state the rules in regards to public comment at that point thereafter. We are being recorded and we are on YouTube Live right now. So anybody that might have missed anything or wants to be earlier or whatever, you can go back and watch this. It'll be out there, okay? Great. Notice is hereby given that the public hearing pursuant to Title I of Article 18A of the New York State General Municipal Law will be held by County of Shenango Industrial Development Agency, the IDA, on the 27th day of October 2021 at 6:00 PM local time at 223 Marble Road, Guilford, New York, 13870, in connection with the following matters. Hybridge Wind LLC, on behalf of itself and/or the principles of Hybridge Wind LLC and/or entity formed or to be formed on behalf of any of the foregoing, the company, has applied to the County of Shenango Industrial Development Agency, the agency, to enter into transaction in which the agency will assist in A1, the acquisition of an interest in the company's leasehold and easement interest in search of parcels of the land located in the town of Guilford, Shenango County, New York, collectively the land. Two, the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping on or under the land of a buried and overhead collection and transmission line system to carry electricity to the point of interconnection. Two, one or more electrical substations and related switching. Three, operations, maintenance, and storage buildings. Four, one or more meteorological and communication towers and devices. And five, a system of gravel access roads, security fencing, gates, parking, landscaping, and related improvements to the land, collectively the improvements. And number three, the acquisition, installation, and equipping therein and thereon of certain equipment, including wind turbine generators with a total combined rated capacity of between 90 and 103.5 megawatts transformers, potential battery storage and related facilities, fixtures, fixtures, machinery, furniture, and equipment, collectively the equipment. All of the foregoing for use by the company as a wind-powered electric generating facility, collectively the project facility. And B, the granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of Section 85414 of the General Municipal Law with respect to the foregoing, including the exemptions from mortgage recording taxes, sales and use taxes, and real property taxes for the project facility, but not including special assessments and add valoral lettings, collectively the financial assistance. The IDA contemplates providing financial assistance to the company with respect to the project in the form of exemption from sales and use taxes on materials and/or equipment used or incorporated in the facility, potential exemptions from mortgage recording taxes and abatement of real property taxes for 30 years on the assessed value of the facility, which financial assistance is a deviation from the agency's uniform tax exemption policy. In accordance with 875-3 of the New York General Municipal Law, and if the company's application is approved, any New York State and local sales and use tax exemption claimed by the company and approved by the agency in connection with the above described project may be subject to recapture by the agency under the terms and conditions set forth in 875-3 and will be set forth in the agent agreement to be entered into by and between the agency and the company. The proposed exemption from state and local sales and use taxes is expected to exceed $100,000. The proposed pilot agreement deviates from the standard property tax abatement schedule of the IDA. A representative of the IDA will, at the above stated time and place, hear all persons with views in favor of or opposed to either the location or nature of the project with a proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the IDA. In addition, at or prior to such hearing, interested parties may submit to the IDA written materials pertaining to such matters. A report of the hearing will be made available to the County of Shenango Industrial Development Agency Board of Directors. Approval of the financing by the IDA through its Board of Directors is necessary. The application for financial assistance filed by the company with the IDA, including an analysis of the cost and benefits of the proposed project, is available for public inspection at the offices of the IDA located at 15 South Broad Street, Norwich, New York, 1385. You are welcome to view the meeting via Shenango IDA YouTube channel, and the meeting will be streamed live, best dated October 11, 2021, County of Shenango Industrial Development Agency. Okay. Letters. As of today, we have received eight letters, seven for and one against. The IDA Board members have received a copy tonight. There are copies available to the public, and they'll be posted as part of the meeting packet on our website, so you can review those. Pretty exciting so far, right? So, I don't see anybody that probably wants to speak. Is that correct? I'm just kidding. So I'm just going to go over some real... Some rules real quick in regards to the public comment section, okay? All who would like to make a comment will be given a maximum of five minutes to speak. Carrie will let you know when your five minutes is up, and due to the number of anticipated speakers, we are going to stick strictly to that, okay? Each person can only speak once. The IDA Board members and staff will not respond to comments made. This forum is for the public to speak for or against the proposed pilot that is being requested by the applicant. The IDA Board will not be voting on this project tonight. Tonight's public hearing is being streamed live, as you've already heard, on the IDA YouTube channel. After the meeting is over, the recording will be made available immediately, okay? When you do speak, you will be required to state your name and address, please, okay? We didn't do a sign-up sheet, so I'm going to ask for some help with your order on this. So what I would like to do is first by show of hand, see who would like to speak. Okay. So why don't we start on this side of the room in the back, and we'll work our way around. I'll probably ask again who would like to speak, and we'll just continue to move around.
Is there any chance that I could be first so that I can get out of the building quicker?
Does anybody have an issue with that? Because I certainly don't. So, name of address, please.
Thomas Daniel Quinter, 1789 State Highway 8, Mount Upton, Hamilton, Guilford, New York. There are a lot of issues that I've heard brought up against this project. Everything from subsidizing a foreign company from a socialist country to the placement of these windmills and the size of these windmills. And let's face it, they're industrial wind turbines. They're not the little cottage windmill that's pictured when people secure their work. The biggest problem I have is obviously fiscal. Our state just passed a budget that's bigger than all but five countries on earth. Think about that for a minute. Our taxes are going to go up no matter what. This is not going to help in any way with our taxation. It sure sounds like it sometimes, but the ultimate fact is we have these projects going up in one shape or another all over the state. And when they're subsidized, that's going to have to be on the taxpayer. So maybe it's not on Guilford, but it's going to be on our neighbors. It's going to be on our neighboring counties, neighboring towns. The other issue I really want to bring up is that I know for a fact that smaller wind turbine projects have been shut down in Ireland, Germany, Israel, and four in Pennsylvania over infrasound. People don't quite understand infrasound a lot. It's not measured in decibels because it's not audible. What it is, is something that could affect someone physically. The military weaponized it. The only reason that they abandoned that project is because it only affected a certain section of people, and it wasn't very effective as a weapon. But here's the thing. This is a town. The proposed distance for infrasound is three miles, three miles plus, depending on the size. There is nowhere where these are located on the map. There is more than three miles from multiple dwellings. If just one person is made miserable, if their health declines over this, that is one person too many. We also have to think about those on the spectrum with autism and the like. They are more sensitive to these things. It will occur. It will occur if we put these up. We will detriment people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? We'll move on to you in the back there, sir. Thank you.
My name is Paul Moles. I live at 656 Counterout 36 in Guilford. I've lived in Guilford for 48 years since I was five. Before that, I lived just over the line in Bainbridge. I want to start by saying I have leased a portion of my property to Hybridge Wind Farm for the project, but not before my wife and I visited six different wind farms and interviewed 48 people, including town supervisors and town council members at Hope Community. Only after two and a half years of that research did we decide this was right for us in our town. I started a business, PAK Construction Incorporated, May 8 of 1990 in Guilford, for an excavation and concrete contractor. We work in about a 20-mile radius, Green to Sherburne, Gilford, Sault Ste. Melon. Our typical job is one to three weeks, and we have made a strong business from one to three weeks, 10 to 100,000 dollar jobs. More so with a strong customer base that hires our company year to year. In the last four years, we have submitted and won five sizable bids involving prep work for this wind farm and its twin in Sanford. In this time, these jobs have employed me and my crew guys for three months of work. I'm hopeful I can continue to submit bids for more project work, but more so decades of maintenance work to come, such as road maintenance, clearing, grading, landscape needs, ditch cleaning, and snow removal, with our weather patterns, or should be plenty of regular maintenance work over the next 20 or 30 years, which will result in local contractors like myself having better employment opportunities and higher earnings. A concern that I have heard is that a project like this will take up area contractors and suppliers' time. Therefore, other projects would suffer, or sales tax revenue would suffer for the same reason. My plan, as I'm sure any other contractor supplier will be, is to ramp up to meet the greater needs. Four years ago, we contracted the site work and technical concrete work for the Hannah Hand Family Dairy Expansion in Mount Upton. While there, we leveled 11 acres of land, moved several hundred thousand yards of dirt, all in approximately 20,000 yards of gravel, or thousands of yards of concrete, and installed literally miles of water, lime, and electric conduit. Because this was a dairy operation, every dollar with sales taxes up. Due to our company adding employees, adding trucks, and one new dozer, we were able to maintain our typical workload as a normal year. Area customers were serviced. The gravel bed, we bought our gravel from, ramped up and serviced their normal customers as well as our needs. And the typical year's sales tax paid by my company was basically the same. But my company was able to employ more workers as well as add to our equity by purchasing trucks and equipment. As a business owner, I look forward to the challenge of adding to our workload. These are type projects that allow contractors and suppliers to step up to another level. Without pilot, projects like the Hybridge Wind Farm would not come to our area. If projects like this did not come to fruition in our area, there will be less employment opportunities at small local businesses like PAK Construction. I feel the IDA's goal is to strengthen the economic welfare of our counties. One point that always seems to be overlooked is the cost of services a wind farm will not need as opposed to a resident or a rental unit. These windmills will not have a line of kids waiting in the roof for a bus. The windmills will not get party interference on a Friday or Saturday night and require a few of the Shenango County deputies to show up. Windmills will not need to get to work or a store on a snowy day requiring trucks, plows, and sand for the roads. Windmills will not be stopping at the county office building and signing up for social services. So basically, any money that's agreed to on a pilot will be 100% injection into the budgets of this town and county and local schools without requiring the cost of services. The construction of this project will be paid for by investors. The investors are not in Guilford and are not in Shenango County. They're from large cities and other places. This means any money that this project brings to our county or in our town during construction will be 100% monies from other locales. Also, the electricity this project generates will be sold to other places far from Guilford. A large amount of the monies generated by those sales will land right here in Shenango County. These dollars will undoubtedly be spent locally. This will in turn become an economic multiplier for the county. As a 30-plus-year local business owner, I feel if an agreement can be made through solidified products such as this wind farm, opportunities can continue to generate money for local companies with local employees for years to come. When local companies and local workers have more opportunities, they earn more money. They will then invest that money in their local economy and their own local properties, which will in turn boost the local economy and the local tax base.
All right, that's time.
Can I leave this letter with you?
Yes, yeah. And we'll make it part of the record.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. One thing I'd like to remind people is that after you have an opportunity to speak, due to the limited space we have, if you could exit so that if somebody else is waiting out there that would like to come in and speak, we give them the opportunity to. Again, it could be, the rest of the meeting can be for you, okay? I believe you want to speak, sir?
William Howe, 110 Mount Upton Street, Mount Upton, New York, 13809. A little background about myself. I'm currently a driver with Charles Houston, but that allows me to participate in other endeavors. I'm also the CEO of Beware, a startup company. I work at Williamson University with engineering students. We've had projects where students develop wheelchairs you can drive with your eyes. Currently, we're working on a project where we use eye tracking for frame function. I moved back here to make a difference in the area. Grew up here, moved back after being gone 30 years. Currently have an MOA for my company to be acquired, possibly, and I also have a job that's been offered in other states. So this is probably my last chance to contribute to the community. Couple of things about... This isn't a discussion about global warming or anything, but some of the flaws with these large turbines is... There was actually research done by Harvard that found that the turbines they want to put into the US will not decrease global warming, will in fact increase it due to the effects of wind shadows and wind flow. It's only temporary. It only lasts for 100 years. Seeing as how this project's only going to last for 30, you know, I don't see the point of it. There's other problems here that I have to ask about. Number one is you're going to have a battery house with 5,000 kilowatts with lithium-ion batteries. Are you familiar with how catastrophic a fire with lithium ions is? I'm not worried about our fire departments. If there's a fire in a wind turbine, they can't reach, they can't do anything. But if there's a fire in the battery house, they're going to try to fight it, and it will kill people. There needs to be provisions for training and equipment. Is there? Another thing is the death of birds and raptors. A lawsuit in California against the Altamont Pass Wind Resources found that they estimate they killed tens of thousands of raptors and other birds. Now, wind turbines are exempt. They can kill as many as they want, and they usually say, oh, the numbers will go down. Well, that's because you've killed them all. Horse is going to go down. Now, in Europe, I think it's in Netherlands, they've deployed electro-optical sensors that can detect raptors in the area. They will shut the turbines down. Why isn't that being deployed here? Because they don't want to. Another question is assistance, financial assistance. Do you realize that the company made for 2020 $1.7 billion EBITDA? Their projections, and this is in their investor's presentation, is that they will double their profits by including the three projects in New York and the other things they're getting into. So they will be $2.5 billion in profit. Why are we giving them financial breaks? I mean, really? Okay? Also, if you notice, all the people coming and going, this wasn't really well thought out. There was a lack of forethought. I mean, some people are going to say it's conspiracy and don't want people to talk. But I think this is just an example of the lack of forethought and the lack of competent planning. What's going to happen in 30 years? You're dealing with an LLC. An LLC is a limited liability corporation, which can be sold. It's already been sold. Or it can be closed. If all your agreements are with an LLC with no money upfront, you're holding the bag in 30 years. You're not going to have money to take these things down. You're not going to have money to deal with any issues that may arise. You're stuck. Now, if you want to look at where they're building wind turbines in New York, look at where they're being built and where they're not being built. I can tell you why they're being built here. The people in Albany and the people get the warm fuzzies in the metropolitan areas.
I thought you said that sentence.
Okay. They don't care about you or where you live. I'd like to submit a letter that I wrote 2019 to the board.
Yeah, please.
And it addresses liability issues, health issues, things like that.
You can see that anybody who put their comments in writing, if you don't get through your comments in the five minutes, you are more than welcome to submit them to the board, okay? You don't have to ask if you can submit them. Just bring them off, okay? Great. I believe you had your hand raised, no?
I did, yes.
You did, okay. So you'll be next.
Is it okay if I give you... So I can, because of the time constraints, I just wanted to give you guys the bullets so I don't have to speak to them and ease up my time?
Sure.
Okay. Rebecca Young, 1345 County Road 35, Guilford, New York. All right. I've read your mission statement and find that the proposed industrial project for Northland runs counter to your stated goals and purpose. Pilots can prove very detrimental, particularly to small rural communities. There are many tactics employed to artificially lower the revenue of the project and minimize payouts. You need to be able to identify developers who are trying to sell you a pilot when the target area is not lighted or in need of development, but they push a project so as to benefit themselves at the detriment of the community, which I would argue is absolutely the case in Guilford. Finally, a pilot should never be the sole factor that carries a project. And again, in this case, for the admission of the applicant, on pages 5 and 18, that's the case. You have an obligation to safeguard the financial assets of residents of this county and agreeing to the pilot as this runs counter to that. Nothing is free, and I want to help you understand the actual cost of this project is what those are, and to consider that information in the decision-making process. Essentially, there will be 25 676-foot-tall industrial wind turbines in our town, which none of us can actually fathom the immensity of. These are the largest industrial turbines ever placed on land, let alone within rural communities. Even I sort of admit the challenges because they're not typically put in populated areas. In addition to the pitfalls outlined for you in the bullets that I provided, this project has effectively torn our town apart, pitted neighbor against neighbor, even mother against child, and led to threats, harassment, slanderous speech, anxiety, loss of enjoyment, and a general attitude of division in Guilford. I have to say, it's been really sad. If this isn't enough, or maybe you don't particularly care about those things because you don't live here and you don't have to experience it every day, what about the more tangible costs? Northland touts jobs as the crux of their justification, but when you press them, they avoid any guarantees, which I think you could see in your last meeting. They leave it up to the contractor to hire, but offer that it should benefit the labor unions, when in fact their application, the two-year projection, is two part or full-time jobs. That's not job creation. Don't hedge your bets on an entity that isn't here for the long haul. Only their giant turbines will remain local. They have no vested interest in our community, no reciprocity with the county, no products being sold to the community. In fact, 100% of their sales go outside the county. They only offer competition and consumption of local resources with them having an advantage, with property and sales tax exemptions. On top of the breakdown within Guilford, falling property values, the exodus of residents, which has already begun, the pending road damage, traffic challenges and disruptions, including to emergency services, the looming decommissioning costs and efforts, costs associated with potential damages to drinking water, land, and livestock, no proof or demonstration of added benefits to anything other than a tiny fraction of the population. Less than 5% of town residents will receive any kind of direct payment from Northland. Only six of the 21 parcels with turbines on them belong to residents. The rest are non-residents, and eight don't even live in the state. And say, if that wasn't so sad, it'd be laughable. So not only is that promised money not cycling back into our community, the work taking place will provide competition for already established local businesses, and they will have a leg up with tax exemptions and buying power, which could end irreversible damage to our existing businesses. So you need to realize that this project does not meet your own pilot approval standards and certainly doesn't benefit all residents. The risk and harm outweigh the benefits by a great margin. I know it's easy to sit here and to live outside the project area and to be tempted by the lure of money, especially in today's day and age. But I really need you to remember those of us who will pay the true price for your choice. People like my husband and myself, who would be forced to live amid the project and suffer the laundry list of consequences day in, day out. No amount of money can purchase our happiness. I've stayed here, I've worked here, I've volunteered here, and I've given back to this community because I believe in it. And I want to believe in you and your ability to do the right thing. Your obligation is to all of us, including me. And I want you to remember us when you have to dig deeper to courage to fight for the truth. Hold Northland accountable, just like you do every other one of us. And if you must negotiate the pilot, at least demand something that does not insult your intelligence. Show them that we are not just another ignorant community willing to sell our way of life for a lackluster sales pitch. Instead of fighting to keep Northland, fight to keep and protect your residents. Thank you.
Okay. Who else wanted to speak? Okay? Okay. Sir?
Richard Hink, Guilford, Mountain, New York. Been living here for several decades. And you should make this company pay their fair share of taxes. It's just ridiculous what they're proposing. And I'm way less of a public speaker than Rebecca Young, so everything she said duly noted. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak? All right. Sir, next to the rally.
My name is Dwight Reeve, 141, Royal Road, Guilford. There are many factors to consider when sorting through the unusually broad array of potential problematic risks and liabilities. The most overlooked impacts are those that are immeasurable in non-quantifiable in terms of dollars and cents. If dollars and cents is your only touchstone, you'll be removing the humanity from the equation and establishing a arena that is sterile and devoid of the most important values that we hold near and dear. These cherished items should be the benchmark, not the bottom line. To put this into proper context, consider the value you would attach to your spouse, your partner, your parents, your children, family, friends. Consider the value of the quality of your life, your love for our environment, the quietude of rural living, the stunning beauty of the sunrise or sunset. Consider the true value of your health and well-being. No number can be attached, but that doesn't mean that they are less worthy of consideration. In fact, they are the most important items to consider. I follow native ways. In my concern for the impact of the wind turbines and what they would have, their impact on the eagles, during intensive research, research on the issue. Native Americans considered the bald eagle and golden eagle to be highly revered and sacred. Eagles are the highest-flying birds, and they are seen to be nearest to the creative. They are the messages to the creative carrying our prayers. Eagles signify courage, wisdom, and strength. They are the holiest of the feather. But now, industrial wind turbines are now the apex predators of the skies. Normally, the eagle tape in this type of project is considered by wind developers to be a trade secret, therefore is sequestered from public view. Thanks to an erratic filing on our sister project, Blue Stone, we got a glimpse of what they project. Yet in insult to injury, Northland uses a method of modeling the eagle tape that is fundamentally flawed, disheveled, and hovers in their favor. More about logical experts disagree, citing that approximately 100 bald and golden eagles will be killed by the wind turbines through their service life. Citing wind projects in major migration countries is a very bad idea. Now, the question remains, what's the value of the bald eagle or golden eagle? The starting point would be the penalties attached for killing an eagle. Civil penalties apply $1,000 to the first offense, $10,000 to the second offense. Felony convictions carry a maximum fine of $250,000. The fines doubled for an organization. What is the value of 100 eagles that we are so eager to sacrifice? What is the cost of shattered lives, hopes, and dreams? Many people have either retired here or currently raising families. They enjoy the quietude and serenity a rural living provides, devoid of industry, now a blight of 25, 65-story industrial structures, rooms to destroy the harmony. At what cost is this worth? What is the cost of a town that is so divided by a project and benefits so few, yet the burden is borne by the majority? What is the cost of a town? The more tangible consideration, what is the cost of firefighters' training and equipment for a thermal runaway fire that Bill had alluded to? A recent thermal runaway battery fire occurred in Victoria, Australia, at the Tesla Megamatter, which required 35 trucks, 150 firefighters, and 76 hours to contain. That particular battery that went on fire actually burned longer than it actually operated. They mentioned air quality and issued warnings to residents to get themselves intense indoors, close windows, and shut down their heating system so they didn't breathe the toxic smoke. Lithium-ion fires emit highly toxic hydrogen chloride. Even small splashes of highly concentrated hydrogen chloride product on the skin can be fatal. The potential of long-term harm to anyone unlucky enough to breathe the smoke or reproduce room in battery smoke fallout contaminated soil is a major concern. That all said, what's the cost associated with guaranteeing residents' safety in the event of such a crisis? Not knowing is irresponsible.
That's fine.
Not doing is negligent and irresponsible.
Thank you. Mrs. Purple?
My name is Deborah Proud. I live at 119 Fernsville Road in the Hamlet of Guilford, and I chose to retire to Guilford six years ago. I read in the IDA's mission statement that it was established to provide financial and other incentives to firms expanding or locating in Shenango County. This is a great benefit to an organization coming in to establish itself to become part of the community, but I propose that Northland will never be part of what makes Shenango County prosper, unlike Raven, Chobani, or many small independent businesses. Northland is a foreign company, willing solely for its own gain. Yes, the hybrid project will indeed increase the prosperity of those who have signed on to leases or good neighbor agreements, but what about the spores of other residents whose lives will be forever disrupted and enjoyment of their property lost? Many neighbors have spoken of their legitimate concerns of health impacts to not only people, but also livestock. I do not believe those concerns were taken seriously. What about our silent neighbors, the many awash families who are concerned but cannot participate in what their conscious considers confrontation? What if the effect of infrasound does diminish milk production? And along this line, does the IDA know of how ice buildup on turbine blades will be addressed? Residents raised ice buildup concerns early on at Guilford Town Board meetings. I personally heard the Guilford Town Attorney laugh, turn to the Calpine rep, and say, "That doesn't happen here." I was not amused. Are they going to use blade-heating technology to address ice buildup? Are they going to use anti-ice coating applications built directly into the blades? Or are they going to spray the ice though when needed? If snow and ice can set thousands of turbines in Texas, of course it can in New York. Potential pollution from construction of the turbine and from ongoing de-icing would not only threaten the many organic farms that have sprung up, but will also threaten our drinking water supply. What financial laws might occur to farmers and how much more of a financial burden would be placed on Guilford residents if our municipal water supplies are polluted? And what about ice going from the turbine blades spinning at high velocity? That is a concern raised within the NYSRDA public safety considerations. They cited a study modeling ice throws from wind turbines by Joaquin Rensstrom that determined ice throw to be between 717,000 and 1,500 feet, based on turbines smaller than those proposed in Guilford. Do not settle for, this has yet to be determined, from Northland. By now, they know what technology they will be using. I don't believe any of us would sign a contract or purchase a car without knowing its model and features and without knowing the actual cost. Another aspect of the hybrid project is adverse effects on property values. For many of us, our home is our largest investment. The town of Guilford said turbines don't affect property value without doing its own study. An article in GreensillAdvisors.com from April 5, 2019, titled, "Property Values: Do Windmills Affect Property Value?" Stacy's answer is yes. Property values can be negatively impacted from 75% to 35%, with the highest being 40%. Would any of you be interested in living in a home within 1,500 feet of a 676-foot wind turbine? Be honest. The state would not allow property value into Article 10 discussion. Why? I think you know the answer to that. It is my perception that the town of Guilford has been intimidated into going along with this project by a small handful of those in power and their friends and family. Residents had no vote, only the town board. Due diligence is owed to all of Guilford. I am laying this at the feet of Shenango County IDA. Please think independently of what the board's supervisors may advise. I do not mean this as an insult or that he would do otherwise, but the board may tell you that they have already thoroughly investigated all aspects of this project, and I do not believe that's true. It has been said that Guilford would not do anything that would make this project go away. That tells me that the financial benefits for a group of Guilford residents await the hardships, financial loss, and destruction of the beauty of the countryside that drew them to Guilford. I am speaking on this because of the commandments that I live by. They are very simple: to love God and to love people. And I have come to love the people I have met who are very concerned that the standard of living that they have enjoyed will be forever changed, that the prosperity of their farms will be diminished, that their property values will decrease. These are not wealthy people, and I believe that is what Northland and the former governor counted on. And although they are not wealthy, they have sacrificially given hundreds and even thousands of dollars in an attempt to have their voices heard at state level. It seems that money that couldn't have spent within Shenango County was wasted. It is obvious that the state has no intention of listening. I want you to consider this. You cannot serve God and money. You cannot uphold IDA stated purpose to provide financial assistance and verify advanced job opportunities, health, general prosperity, and economic welfare of the people of the county of Shenango and to improve their recreation opportunities and standard of living.
That's fine. Thank you. But you can...
Thank you.
You, sir? Okay. My name is Bill Frat. I'm a founding partner of the Guilford Coalition of Non-Participating Residents. And while I appreciate the opportunity to present the opposing data that illustrates the negative economic impact of the hybrid wind project, five minutes is not nearly enough to be able to, time to make complete comment on this issue. We urge you to evaluate the developers' claims in accordance with the CC IDA's mission statement and goals. And keep in mind that this IDA has a moral obligation to the residents of Shenango County, not Broom, not Delaware, Ozzie, or any of the other 10 counties mentioned. Your residents should be first and foremost in all considerations made by this board. So let's break that down. Your mission statement says, and I quote, "to advance the job opportunities, health, general prosperity, and economic welfare of the people of the county of Shenango, and to improve their recreation opportunities, prosperity, and standard of living." Will the hybrid wind project advance job opportunities for Shenango County residents? No. According to the applicant, this facility, once operational, will employ only two full-time people. However, it should also be noted that one of these employees will be shared with the Blue Stone facility. So does one and a half full-time employment constitute a significant advancement of job opportunities in a county of more than 46,000 people? Furthermore, there is no guarantee that either of these two people will be residents of Shenango County. After the 16-month construction period, please don't be duped into thinking that there will be a boom to the job opportunities for Shenango County residents. It's a fantasy concocted by guarantees to the IDA whatsoever. To detail this here would take more time than it's been allotted. However, you, the board, should take all the time you need to verify and validate the applicant's claims and not just take their word-of-face value. A prime example of this is their reference to the Blue Stone project. They're road repairs, but what about tree clear? What about cement bash plants? What about new access roads? Will this project advance the health of Shenango County residents? No, it will not. Not only is there no potential for advancement of residents' health, but there are a number of potential health hazards that are historically documented and substantiated. These include, as some other people have noted, intrasound, sleep deprivation, mental anguish, and behavioral changes. Physical hazards such as ice throw, blade and tower failures, fires, hazards, materials incidents, et cetera. This facility will do absolutely nothing to enhance the health and safety of Shenango County residents. In fact, these facilities can pose serious threats to both humans, livestock, and wildlife. Will this project advance the general prosperity and economic welfare of the people of Shenango County? No. According to the American Enterprise Institute, there is a growing consensus that GDP alone does not capture the country's overall success and that it does not necessarily lead to improvements in living standards of its citizens. So you have to ask yourselves, what are the measurable criteria for the general prosperity and economic welfare of Shenango County? And then honestly and thoughtfully consider if 25 676 turbines providing electricity primarily for New York City provides greater prosperity for all of the residents of Shenango County? Will this project improve recreational opportunities? No. Like health and safety, this project has no ability to improve recreational opportunities. As a matter of fact, it will likely have a detrimental effect to both sporting property, recreational, or vacation properties in the project area. Will this project improve prosperity or standard of living? Absolutely not. As other people have also said, consider property values. The applicant will try to convince you that there is no evidence of decreased property values. However, there are a good number of independent studies by professional analysts that have concluded that there is evidence of property value decline and property abandonment. Simply ask yourself, would you buy a house next to an industrial wind, industrial generating facility? In conclusion, as you contemplate your decision on this pilot application, don't get tricked into comparing it with solar facilities that have already been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Frat. I think you want to speak, right? Go ahead. You're next.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Jennifer Cassie. I live at 167 Jocelyn Road in Guilford. I am Bill's co-founding partner of the Guilford Coalition of Non-Participating Residents. I chose to retire in Guilford last year after 29 years of active duty service in the Army as a medical service corps officer. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and for your attention. I'll start by quoting page 84 of the 2016 Shenango County Comprehensive Plan. It reads, and I quote, "Because of Shenango County's north-to-south-facing hills, which hamper the flow of wind, the ability to locate large and in some cases, small wind energy is prohibitive." End quote. Since our mountains have not changed direction, I have to believe this statement is still accurate. In addition, the developer actually states in their application that Guilford is a reduced wind resource. This begs the fundamental question, why was this project proposed for Guilford at all? I'll quickly go through four supposed reasons for the hybrid wind project. Reason number one, the fiscal windfall and related improved prosperity and standard of living for the residents. First of all, only 31 of the 63 leases and easements belong to permanent residents. This is hardly a windfall for the population as a whole. Next, property values. Despite what Northland states, there are several independent studies by professional analysts as nearby as Western New York which conclude that there is plenty of evidence for property value decline and abandonment. And I'll ask, as the third person to say it, if you were looking to move, would you choose a place that was next to a 676-foot turbine? Some people who live in the area now will undoubtedly move away, likely selling their property for much less than it's currently worth. Ultimately, decreased land value leads to a reduction in real property tax revenue and population decline in an area already declining. Both factors will produce a decline in regional sales impacting existing local businesses and reducing sales tax revenue. Reason number two, green energy. I find it very hard to believe that each turbine offsets an equivalent or greater amount of carbon dioxide than what is sequestered by the forest land that would be destroyed to erect them. Even environmental organizations such as Audubon Society and Greenpeace admit that poor sightings of these projects greatly diminish the value of a turbine project if you are looking at the big picture. Isn't it extremely hypocritical to state that we're erecting turbines to help fight climate change and then remove hundreds to thousands to millions of trees, the most effective carbon sink on the planet, especially in a location which is admittedly not well-suited for wind energy? The significant environmental concerns related to decommissioning have already been touched on, so I'm not going to belabor them. Reason number three, the pilot. You're hearing plenty about this from other speakers, so I'll keep it short. If the current pilot is such a great deal for us, then why will Northland withdraw their application if the pilot is not approved? It's because if they actually have to pay taxes, the project won't make them enough money. That alone means the current deal is far less than what the county could make without the pilot. My research indicates that Northland Power actually had a revenue of over $2.6 billion in 2020, much of which benefited Canada, not the U.S. The handout they're offering for the hybrid project is insulting at best. Reason four, electrical contribution to the grid and job opportunities. As everyone in the room knows, just like the water from our reservoirs, the energy generated by hybrids will feed the never-satiated appetite of New York City. Our bills won't decrease, and the local jobs will end in less than two years. What we will get is destroyed forests and hunting lands, damaged roads, and increased traffic, to name a few. I realize the IDA's job is not to approve or disapprove the project, per se, but I think that's counter to the responsibilities outlined in your mission statement. The approval for this project ultimately came from a sighting board built out of the unchecked nepotism by a governor who resigned in disgrace. Does that seem fair to you? You will decide if sacrificing the residents and our way of life in Guilford is worth what Northland is offering. You will bear the burden of this decision for the rest of your lives. What is our community worth to you? In the Army, we use the term "moral courage." It's applied to leaders and soldiers who choose the hard right over the easy wrong, even when, and especially when, it's not popular. In the absence of moral courage, soldiers die. Thus far, the only courageous leader we've had throughout this ordeal actually resigned from his duties because he tried not to stomach the corruption that was rife in this sham of an approval process. I hope that some of you have the moral courage to acknowledge that the only entity getting a great deal out of this is Northland. I hope some of you have the moral courage to say, "We know that Northland is targeting our area because they think we're poor, we're ignorant, we're greedy, and we're not going to fall for it." And I hope some of you will have the moral courage to admit that if something seems too good to be true, it probably is, and you'll vote accordingly. Thank you.
My name is, uh, this is a package deal because we're together. So my name's Curtis Douglas. I'm 167 Jocelyn. Like Jennifer, we've been a part of the Guilford community for about 15 years. We bought in 2007. I just see Georgia Matt, so maybe it's not 14 years. Anyway, like her, spent 28 years in military, just retired, and we chose to repower up the Guilford. And it's because of the, all you gotta do is look around and look at the mountains, look at the green space. at the green space, and look at the people that are a part of the community. I am not for this project, I'll flat out, but it's been approved, and we get to live with that. Do I think the pilot's a good deal? I don't think it's a good deal, not if it's a thirty-year pilot. I think that for us, if we're going to move forward with this, let's have some flexibility as a town and a county and take a page out of room counties' IDA playbook and look at either a fifteen or twenty-year pilot. We've got to have some flexibility because there are a lot of issues raised with limited liability corporations, with the decommissioning process, the amount of money that's being set aside for decommissioning. Right now, there is a lot at risk for this county and for this city. And the upfront, a lot of money. Well, you know, it's interesting, and I tell Jennifer this a lot, and some of the folks that we know, prior to being here in Guilford, tailing my career, I managed organizations that had anywhere from five to seven thousand employees, and we had about a seven-hundred-and-fifty million-dollar budget. And we did deals that were in the billions of dollars. And we never, we would, and it was a lot with public sector, and we would have never attended to an agreement that was a thirty-year agreement. Just went and done it. Mostly with a company that is a limited liability, that has letters of credit, and is not truthfully giving us upfront money for decommission. So that's really all I gotta say is that I would very much stress to you guys that if we're going to move forward with it, which I hope we don't, but if we do, let's have some flexibility in either looking at fifteen, twenty, or thirty, or, excuse me, fifteen or twenty-year pilot. Thanks.
Thank you. This time, that was everybody that was in the original room when we opened up and I asked who wanted to speak. So I know we've had some other people come in since then as people have filtered out. So again, by showing hands, who still would like to speak? Okay, so we're gonna start right there.
I'm Alicia Townsend. I work, I live at four-seven-nine Shumway Hill Road in Guilford, New York. We've lived there for thirty-five-plus years, and we have been opposed to this whole thing since we've heard about it. And it seems to me that nobody cares about, that really is listening to the people that don't want this put in, far as the health concerns and just the devalue of our property. We put sweat, blood, and tears into what we have, and to retire here and live here, and we have to worry about having these six-hundred-and-seventy-five-foot monsters put on the top of the hill that are right behind our house, and then a limited liability company that's gonna take no stance on anything if anything's wrong with anybody because they are a limited liability company. And we have neighbors all around us. Every time you turn around, somebody's putting their place up for sale because of this whole fiasco. And I feel like the reason that they come to these counties, Chenango, Delaware, and other counties, is because we're so oppressed. We don't have a, we're not booming like we used to be. What better place to come and throw money around and ask people to put these things on their land than to offer them a bunch of money? Who's gonna turn it down? A lot of people can't afford what they have now. And I'm, it's disturbing to me that nobody is doing like a, they have those studies. I can't believe they have studies on the health concerns because these aren't even on land in this country. They're not even put on this land in this country. So how can they have health studies on anything that are a hundred percent accurate? And it's not just for me, it's my kids. I have kids that live here, and I have family members and people in the community that I love and care about. And I feel like there needs to be more due diligence put forward on this. And when somebody goes to get a foil about stuff, and then we get the foil and everything's redacted, what are they trying to hide? That's my question. And I agree with Jennifer Casey and her partner on what was said before me. And I have nothing written down because I figured I wouldn't get in to speak anyway, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you. So real quick, because again, most of the people that want to speak now weren't in the room when we originally started the meeting, I just want to quickly go over what the rules of public comment are, again, real quick. Everybody's been following great, I appreciate it, everybody's been professional, so thank you. You'll be given five minutes to speak, and in five minutes' time, Carrie will let you know that you're done. Again, we've also established that if you have your comments written down, you are more than welcome to submit it, especially if you did not get through them and you want all your comments to be reviewed, you just bring them up when you're done, okay? Each person can only speak once. The IDA board members and staff will not respond to comments made. This is a forum for the public to speak against or for the proposed pilot that is being requested, and the IDA will not be voting on anything tonight as well. And for those of you that want to go back and read and see all this again, if you weren't in the room in the beginning, it is on the IDA YouTube channel. It'll be uploaded immediately following this meeting, okay? So we're caught back up to date. Jared, I believe you had your hand up to speak, so go ahead.
I can't hear you speak because I'm very, in order to address a very specific concern, I believe, some members of the IDA have, and that's the ability of local businesses to service this project. And I would say, yes, local businesses do have the ability to service this project without, not at the expense of current customer base. Those of you who don't know me, I'm in the fuel supply business, and I believe that it would be good for our industry, I know it's a finite timeline, but we look to partner with companies that are counter-seasonal to our current business. We have wintertime drivers that we try to employ all summer long. So anytime we can find an opportunity to partner with somebody that helps us out and helps our drivers out and keeps them employed, I do know there's a finite timeline to that, and it's only a year, but every year, we're always looking for additional opportunities to partner with somebody for those, to keep those drivers busy and keep our business profitable. We do spend a lot of money here in the community, so we try to keep you here. And I know I probably have a dog in the race. We aren't giving any business. We'll go through a bit process, just like everybody else, but I do think it will be good for our industry. Also, I do believe that, because there's a finite timeline to this, and I can speak on a general principle for businesses, I don't believe that somebody like me would just push out our current customer base to service this project. We know these customers need to be here for us afterward, so we do certainly believe we could service this project if we were given the opportunity to bid on it, and I don't, I think it would be good for us and I think it would be good for some of the other companies.
I agree. Jared, can you just state your name and address for the record? Because I'd have to keep that.
Yeah, Jared Barlow, President of Blue Ox Corporation. My address is thirty-eight North Canal Street, Oxford, New York. One-three-eight, three-oh.
Thank you. That's the only thing I forgot, because it was a written note on the other sheet. Please, when you do speak, state your name and your name and your address. Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak? All right, you got your hand up first.
My name is Deb Munyon. I live at twelve-twenty-nine County Road thirty-five in Guilford. I'm also a county employee. I've been, I chose to live in the town of Guilford. I could have lived anywhere in Chenango County as a county employee. I chose Guilford because of the beautiful surroundings that we have. I don't know if you folks are from this area, but if you ever drive down County Road thirty-six, if you're driving from Sydney toward Norwich and you just look around, it's breathtaking. But I realize that you guys are here because of the business end of it and money, okay? And I really hope to God that you don't do this to us, that you don't approve this project. This is going to devastate Guilford. The number-one business in Guilford is agriculture. It's not wind farms, and it's not, we don't have a big factory here in Guilford. That's probably why they chose us. It's agriculture. The project turbines will lower milk production, which in turn will put more of our family farms out of business. Family farms that are already struggling today, and they're not going to reap a penny of this wind turbine project. Most of the farms in Guilford aren't, don't have lease agreements. And this is going to devastate the agriculture. This is going to devastate wildlife. Somebody spoke earlier about eagles. We have eagles in Guilford, right near where they're talking about building these things. And the eagle is the national bird. I didn't prepare a speech. I don't have anything written down like most of these folks do, so bear with me here while I ramble, but... This is going to absolutely cremate us. This is just, it's not going to be worth it. Yeah, there's going to be a year of business construction and stuff like that where this gentleman here is going to benefit from it because he'll be supplying fuel. Okay, great. But what about in fifteen years and twenty years when there's only two people working here who aren't gonna be from Guilford even? This is supposed to be for Guilford, Guilford is supposed to benefit from this. They've already told us that what Guilford's gonna get out of this is gonna buy a ten-wheeler, a new truck for a barn. Oh, boy. We already get taxed for that. We don't need to, we don't need to sell our souls for a truck. It just, it just isn't worth it to me. I chose to live here because of how beautiful Guilford is. I could have lived in Sherburne where the electric rates are sometimes cheaper, and we're not going to get anything from this electric rate thing that they're building. It's just not gonna happen. All of the electricity that they're allegedly going to generate goes into the national grid or whatever. It doesn't benefit Guilford, not one cent of it. We don't get any, anything from this. They're going to devastate our property rights. Now, if I owned property next to somebody who has a lease agreement where one of these turbines is gonna be built, I won't forever, I won't be able to build next to it or use my property. My property next to it is going to be worth nothing, and yet I'm gonna have to pay taxes on it, and I won't be able to utilize it because you can't build next to these things. You can't use your property then as you want. It's, this isn't, this isn't right for Guilford. One young lady spoke about the wind in, and that's true, there's all kinds of studies, that the wind in Guilford isn't really suitable. It's, the whole project just doesn't make sense. It's not right for us. It's not right for Guilford. It's not right for Chenango County. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you wanted to speak, yes, you.
Okay. I'm Paula Correll. I live on Norwich Guilford Road and County Road thirty-six. As you just mentioned, the view is just breathtaking up there. We have many photographers go up there and just take pictures, and right now, this project, hopefully it doesn't go through, but if it does, there'll be one turbine behind us, and there's gonna be two to three possibly right in that view that I've talked about. And it's not just the view, but thirty-seven years ago, my husband and I... This is so... How do I do this? This means so much to a lot of us, and we feel like we're getting stepped all over, and that's the same too. Thirty-seven years ago, we moved here, we raised our two children, and we just absolutely loved it here. And now the town is being divided. People are fighting against each other that never fought before. We've got the ambush moving in because they absolutely love it around here. And I'm really worried about them because of the traffic, that the trucks that they're gonna have to put up with, the trucks, if they, if this project goes through and they build this. I hope nobody gets hurt, but if we, if you knew where we live, it's so dangerous since we moved here, and if these trucks come in, they start coming in, and these horses and buggies, there's no place for them to go, nowhere for them to go. If they get hurt, it's gonna be devastating. And when this first started talking about this project, there's Hybridge, their, their thought was, as far as shadow flicker, so I won't be able to see these, was to put up trees, plant trees, so you wouldn't see them after a while. We're gonna be dead and gone. And our son just moved back because he liked the area. He just moved back up here three years ago from North Carolina, and just lived down the road from us because he wanted their son to be living around in this area, because he grew up here and he loved it so much. And now it's almost like, sometimes I wonder, even though he doesn't say anything, he's sorry now, because their jobs, they had excellent jobs, making double down there what they are up here. But I think he just wants to be around family, and this is such a close community, and I hate that it got divided up just because of, it always comes down to money. I don't care what it is, it always comes down to the money. And what before, is it worth the sacrifice? I wish, I wish you could give us an answer, what we could do to stop this, and I really don't think you can, because it comes down to politics and money, two things. And how sad is that, that we live in this world nowadays, that this is how, everything is so screwed up, and I really, I believe that this is why everything's so messed up, is just because nobody cares. I really don't think anybody cares unless it's gonna benefit for themselves financially and politically, politically. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Yes, you in the back with your hand up, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Newell. I live on two-seven-seven Shumway Hill Road, Guilford, New York. I grew up on Shumway Hill. I moved away when I got married for twenty years, just in Sydney, but I moved back. I've been back for fifteen, sixteen years on Shumway Hill. I live right next to my parents where I was raised, and we have, there's gonna be two turbines, if this goes through, there's gonna be two turbines right in back of us, and there's gonna be two or three across the road from us, right by the ridge across the road from us. And the ones that are gonna be behind us will, if this goes through, they're definitely gonna interfere with my dad's property. Nobody even asked my dad anything about any of this. He has a spring-fed water service back there on his property, and this, one of the turbines, if they do that, it's gonna, when they blast and all that, it's gonna definitely destroy his spring. He won't ever be able to have his spring water again. But who cares? Because there's, somebody's making money on it, but who cares? They say that there's a shadow flicker that you gotta be concerned about. I've been diagnosed with Meniere's disease. I don't know if anybody knows what that is, but it's, a flickering, the shadow flicker will definitely affect a Meniere's disease person with the flashing and all of that, the humming and all of that. That concerns me. I don't know if it does anybody else. It certainly doesn't the turbine people. It doesn't affect certainly Guilford people that want this to go through because of money. I, we've watched document after document expectation on these turbines, on all the the ice that gets thrown, the oils that leak from them, and they're supposed to be up on mountains, and all these oils that leak from them, that they go down into the ground and down into the people's property that are around them. Why would anybody want this on their property? And they don't care about the people that are around them. It's all for money. Why? I just don't get it. And nobody cares about anybody else except money anymore. I guess, I guess that's just, I guess that's all I got to say. I just don't understand why people are so greedy anymore and why we have to deal with this, because this Guilford is... Because this Guilford is, like everybody else said, a beautiful, beautiful place until these go up, if they do. And I pray that you don't let it off. Thank you.
I do. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Latis and I live on the Creech Smith Road down here, cross right across from the High Bridge. These monstrosities are being installed all the way across and up the, up the valley there. And I'm in my house, maybe 52 years in December, 50 years, I'm sorry, 50 years. I took that a long time. And I guess I'm one of the others that moved here for the beauty, tranquility, and peace of a wilderness rural farming area. These, if I wanted to move to an industrial site, I would've moved to Binghamton. I would've moved to El Meyer off the Syracuse, whatever. I chose a rural area for the beauty of it and peace. And I raised my family here. And I am absolutely devastated with this proposal of these monstrosities, 700 frickin' feet high. It's disgusting. And the effects on the wildlife, right? I mean, I live, I'm in the woods. That's where I always wanted to be, okay? And I look out and I see the deer and I see the turkeys and I see the rabbits, right? And, and it's just so beautiful and peaceful. Like, I take a ride over toward my place and I come up the Mount Upton Hill Road. And when I get up on the top of the hill there and looking down into the valleys, I mean, it's just nothing, awe-struck here. I'm just constantly awe-struck. The beautiful sunsets, sunrises that I've experienced all of these years. And this is a total destruction of a beautiful, like many have said, or have said, that I've heard, just a beautiful tranquil and scenic area. And it's, to me, it's one of the most beautiful, and I've been in many different states, it's one of the most beautiful areas of all the Northeast. And they destroyed it with this industrial, it's not even an industrial, it's a industrial disaster and 700-foot towers, you know? And the damage it does, not only to the wildlife, the birds and bats and everything else, but the, the health effects that it creates, should be the vibrations and the noise and flickering, as they say, you know? And at night, when you look out in the sky, we don't have, we don't have the indirect lighting of any city area. It is so beautiful. The stars are like diamonds in the sky with different constellations. And I've enjoyed all of these years and they're going to destroy it with that. And the effects of the waters, right, I'm also on a gravity-fed spring. And it's been the most delicious, I'd say, if I was, I have no problem selling it, but I just love the taste of the water. It is unreal. It's just beautiful. And with the blessing that's gonna take place for the foundations, the marvelous foundations that it's gonna take to support a 700-foot structure, I mean, it's unimaginable. So they're gonna just destroy the, the ground from the turkeys with the water and affect many of, obviously wells also, but I'm on the spring, okay? And each, these, the installation of these wind towers, windmills in the oceans is affecting the fish and the lobsters and all that where they're migrating and relocating because they're damaging to the fish as well as the wildlife around them. They're an absolute disaster and I'm 150% against any construction of them. And yeah, there's some people that recognize some, some dollars from it, like everybody is saying. And that's at the sake of hundreds of other people who live in all the areas around them. The devastation and reduction of property values and the health and the beauty of this wonderful countryside. That's it for me. I don't think I have anything to add to it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Francesca Testy. I have land to 201 Shumway Hill Road, Guilford. I inherited my land from my brother. I stand to have a windmill 1500 feet from my house. The land around me was completely either leased for turbines or access roads or transmission lines. And I finally, I found that out very late in the process when I saw the map. I have a little capizoidal land completely surrounded by leased land. I can't add, I mean, everybody has said that you leave this place, if you don't really, if you don't live here, you don't know it. And that is gonna be destroyed. What bothers me most though is you're gonna give this pilot, so you're asking me to subsidize the company that destroyed my land. And I just don't see where that's fair. I mean, if they, if they wanna put this project here and they can't afford to build it, put it somewhere else. But don't come to the residents of this place and say, well, they wanna come in and they wanna have this project and there's a few people in this town who got contacted very early, people who have places on the board, who have family members who got these leases. So they nail that down. And there's, this few bunch of people are making very good money on this, on this program. But the rest of us are, are literally being destroyed. My land can never be sold. I wouldn't wanna sell it because I inherited it from my brother. But you're looking at a few people, a few families in this town making very big money. Some businesses saying they think they can, you know, service this project. They have no guarantee that they will be given these contracts. So that's, that's a big if. And I don't see where you're, you know, why you would consider this if this company needs our help to build this thing here. It needs a tax break. A billion-dollar corporation needs a tax break. That makes no sense to me. If anybody needs a tax break, it's the residents of Guilford because we don't have that kind of money. But you're asking us to put the bill for this company and lose the value of our land, which it definitely is, I mean, come on. You wanna live 1500 feet from a turbine? Nobody does. So I'm hoping you will look at this again and you will decide, you know, this is not really feasible to that far place.
Thank you. All right, she was the last person that I saw raise their hand last time I asked if anybody wanted to speak. This, last chance, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Jared?
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Elizabeth Bowland and I live at 483 High Bridge Road, Mount Upton. This is a concern, a little, it's a little different than what people have been just talking about. A one mile from our home and closer to other people's homes is a cluster of five turbines. Now, they are within a mile of each other, this circle of turbines. And I had asked way back when Calpine was setting up the project, why, why are you doing that? What's, what's that about when all the others are so much further spread about, spread out? And he said, well, if we don't have that number, we're not gonna make money. And so I went and started to research about clusters. Clusters are not as efficient as standalone, more standalone turbines because of all the turbulence that's created because of being so close to each other. And then, you know, people are talking about all the side effects of, of these things, you know, the, the cattle and the human beings. I couldn't find anything on what's, what's gonna happen, you know, when you have a cluster like that with, you know, turbulent wind and them vibrating off each other or whatever's gonna happen. So I just wanted to raise that as, it just didn't, this didn't seem right to me that he actually said that, that we wouldn't make enough money if we don't do that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, since that was the last person that wanted to speak at this meeting, I will close public comment and we will adjourn the meeting at this point.
If there's no one to speak?
Yep, if nobody else wants to speak. I'm not seeing any hands. All right, at this point in time, thank you all very much. Everybody's very professional. I appreciate it. Thank you. Being adjourned.